The next three speakers are George Soderoff, Sharon Hightower, and John Hill.
Madam Chairman and members of the Rent Guidelines Board, perhaps you are wondering why you have to sit here and listen to testimonies and witness demonstrations that you might feel are redundant. It is because men and women have given their lives to protect the rights of the rest of us to use lawful methods in these kinds of forms to persuade you to consider our situation. Ultimately, we would like you to decide to protect our homes and not agree to any assault that will contribute to the fraying of the fabric of our society. I will tell a very short story. There was a man traveling from Jerusalem to Jericho when he fell amongst predatory landlords who grew up and choked him. And when they had deprived him of food and shelter, they threw him down and he fell on stony ground. And he landed so hard that he rolled into the gutter. And the rains came down and the floods came up, almost to the point where the man was drowning. And his condition was so dire that that gutter is called dire straits to this very day. First, a politician happened on the scene and he asked, "Is that man a constituent?" "No, he'll have to call Albany." And the politician passed on the other side. Next to arrive was a civil servant. When he saw the man, he said to himself,[97.84][98.52]"I serve at the pleasure of one more powerful. I cannot risk offending that one and losing this cushy appointment." And the civil servant passed by on the other side. Finally, an ordinary citizen appeared. He said, "I have no political connections, nor do I possess personal riches, but I'll do what I can to help." From the predatory landlords to the ordinary citizen, all characters in this story acted lawfully. The question is, who acted ethically? We know that the Rent Guidelines Board will act lawfully. We are asking that the Rent Guideline Board act ethically in this situation and vote for a rent rollback.
Thank you. Sharon Hightower.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Sharon Hightower. I live in 10453, but I'm originally from this neighborhood right here, my haven. I've been around for over six decades. I started right in this neighborhood right here, 136th Street, here in the Bronx. When I was a little girl, I remember my mother and her sister having to hang heavy drapes at the windows and put coats on the bed along with heavy quilts that my grandmother, who I never knew, had made just to try to keep me warm. Here it is, six decades later, I've lived in other places and everything, I've come back to the Bronx, I've been living where I'm at now for over 25 years, and still, no heat. Out of the six decades of my life, I do not understand why New York City still allows these landlords to give us absolutely no heat. And on the weekends and the holidays, we don't get no hot water. At least they alternated in my building. We get hot water, you know, in the bathroom most of the time. So if you really want to eat, you better go in the bathroom and wash your dishes in the tub. Another thing, we have no extermination on a monthly basis at all anymore. There's no mopping of the common areas and elevators anymore daily. No pay jobs every three years, which I understand is by law in New York City. These new landlords that took over my building six years ago came with no last names, no building manager's last names. I'd never heard of that before. And now we got leases with no back to it. The second page instructions to tenants and instructions to landlords with the Department of Housing and Community News, information, phone number, address at the bottom is completely missing. Why is that? Do they not want us to know who we have to contact in an event that we need to speak to somebody that regulates over the rent stabilized buildings? It's a phony lease as far as I'm concerned. This new landlord put an MCI on our building as soon as they get there. I did not know that that was a new racket, and still I started coming to Casa and reading more and seeing what was going on in the Bronx. So this is the new scam, huh, the new racket? Put an MCI on a building, alright? And on top of it, on the building that already has some of those repairs made.
Excuse me, we need to move on to the next speaker. Could you wind up your testimony, please?
I just want you to know, I had to go to Urban, one of those legal places, Free Legal, to get some repairs done that was overboard with leaks, mold. The mold is coming back now. For six months, I had leaks last year, and this has been an ongoing thing for years off and on. And on top of it, these new landlords, after I wanted for them to come and do it, wouldn't do it because they had to go for their Jewish holiday. And so here I am with cascading leaks in my apartment. And now those leaks are coming back. I don't understand why work can't be done when the people who are working in the building, the staff, is not Jewish. And I want to know why does my lease have to be served to me late? Every two years, my lease is now two months late. Could it be because I'm a long-term tenant? Could it be because my rent is frozen through DRE? People are always saying, "You've lived here a long time." Well, you know what? My mother didn't raise no gypsies.
Thank you. John Hill. Is John Hill here? Okay. The next speakers are Abigail Rodriguez, Australia Gonzalez, and Carmen Castillo.
Buenas noches.
Good evening.
I'm Abigail Rodriguez. Eh, solamente quiero decirle que yo sé que como personas humanas ustedes van a tener conciencia de todos los que... los inclinamos, estamos poniéndole todos nuestros problemas, nuestras inquietudes, porque realmente somos familia. Madre de hijos, madre sola, somos... habemos muchas madres que somos solas y queremos luchar. Solamente yo sé que la frustración de ustedes no es la de nosotros, las preocupaciones quizás no sean las mismas de... o sea, no es de ustedes.
Excuse me, we need to get... Pause for interpretation, please.
Good evening. My name is Abigail Rodriguez. I... I'm here to talk to you as human beings and to talk to your conscience about our problems and our worries, about our families, about being mothers, many of the single mothers who are struggling, who are fighting. I understand that your problems and your worries might not be the same as ours.
Yo vivo muchos años en aquí en el Bronx. He criado mis hijos a como sola, a como he podido. Eh, solamente yo le pido a ustedes que tengan conciencia porque queremos ser personas con mejor vida, mejor apartamento, porque en el Bronx es de personas que somos pobres, no somos gente rica. Y da vergüenza que Nueva York, un país tan rico, haya tantos apartamentos en pobrezas. No son dignos de nosotros. ¿Por qué? ¿Por qué? Yo me pregunto, ¿por qué? Somos personas humanas y queremos luchar. El... Yo vivo...
So, I've been living in the Bronx for a long time. I raised my children here by myself as a single mother as well as I could. And I'm asking you to listen to your conscience, to have a conscience. We want to live better. We want to improve. We want our lives, our apartments to be better. The Bronx is full of poor people. New York is so rich, and I ask myself, I ask you, "How can so much poverty with living conditions that offer no dignity exist in such a rich place?"
Quiero decirle que ahora mismo en este momento, yo lo que vivo es del Social Security. Tengo tres cuartos, nada más, un cuarto. Tengo mis hijos ahí viviendo conmigo. ¿Por qué? Porque no pueden pagar una renta. Porque el sueldo que ellos ganan es miserable. Vivimos cinco personas en un cuarto. Yo tengo mi sala, tres camas, para poder yo poder sobrevivir. Soy feliz, porque soy feliz. Me conformo, pero por favor, no aumenten más la renta para nosotros poder luchar como madre. Solamente gracias, que buenas noches, y que Dios los bendiga y le dé conciencia. Gracias.
Thank you.
So, I live off Social Security. I have three rooms in my apartment, but I only have one room. My children live with me because they make miserable wages and they can't afford rent elsewhere. We have three beds in one room. I'm happy. I'm not saying I'm not. I live happily. I am satisfied with what I have in some ways. But I'm asking you, I'm trying to reach your conscience here to help us, to help with rent, to help our conditions improve. Thank you, and may God bless you.
Thank you. Australia Gonzalez.
Buenas noches.
Good evening.
Mi nombre es Australia Gonzalez. Vivo en el Bronx por más de 26 años. Eh, tenía muchos problemas en mi edificio, el cual tuvimos que organizar, no, porque no arreglaban, había muchas ratas, mucha cucaracha, eh, mucha basura de... prendida por todos los lados. Pues tuvimos que poder organizarlo para poder arreglar los apartamentos. Pero sí, la renta era sube, sube, y sube. Donde yo vivo hay apartamento de familia que pagan hasta $3,000 dólares en una zona pobre.
Excuse me, just pause for a moment so we can get the interpretation, please.
So, my name is Australia Gonzalez. I've been living in the Bronx for over 26 years. We had lots of problems in my building, so we organized. We had rats, we had roaches, there was trash everywhere. So we organized, and conditions improved somewhat. However, the rent's gone up repeatedly. There were apartments in my building that were renting for $3,000 a month.
Y aún así, tienen que pelear para que le arreglen porque ellos cobran renta fija y... y los arreglos, hay que hacer una pelea para poder lograr los arreglos porque no quieren arreglar, no quieren darle los servicios a la gente. Por lo menos la calefacción, después que no organizamos, no falta. Pero para eso fue una lucha, hay una guerra muy constante. Pero la renta sí ellos no... No hay que hacerle la guerra, pues se la van subiendo y subiendo y subiendo sin parar.
So, the Bronx is a place with poor people, and we've had to fight for repairs, we've had to fight... And they didn't want to give repairs, they didn't want to give services like heat. We had to organize to get heat too. We've had to organize to get everything. We don't seem to need to organize for the rents to go up. They just keep going up and up and up.
Lo que queremos decirle, por favor, es que tengan un poco de sensibilidad porque mucha gente están abandonando sus apartamentos porque no tienen... no tienen el ingreso para pagar. Y a la vez, tienen que rentar cuartos a personas que ni siquiera conocen para no ser desalojados. Buenas noches.
So what I'm here to ask you is to please be sensitive to the fact that there are many people leaving their homes because they don't have the money to pay the rent. And that they're also in situations where they have to rent rooms to strangers in their homes in order to be able to make that payment. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. Carmen Castillo. Is Carmen Castillo here? Okay. The next speakers are Natasha Cooper, Joy Fowler, and Avis Einsley. Natasha Cooper. Joy Fowler.
Should I come?
Oh. Becca, can you get the mic up there?
Oh, she needs the mic.
So she wasn't here, right? Natasha Cooper?
I got you, I got you. Okay. Good evening.
Good evening.
And thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. I want to say... I've worked in corporate America for many years. I've been a resident of the Bronx for 42 years. Prior to becoming disabled in 2012 due to breast cancer, I was making $105,000 a year plus bonus. As a result of my breast cancer, I have been placed on Social Security. As a result of being placed on Social Security, I no longer get the money I have been accustomed to. So I cannot afford a rent increase. Not only can I not afford a rent increase, I do not believe it is fair. It is not fair because the living conditions are not well. There's poor lighting, elevators are frequently out, the lobbies and hallways are not cleaned, the residents are not safe. It is not fair. I understand that the landlords have bills and responsibilities, but so do we. I also understand that they want to be paid for their residences. And we're willing to pay, but accordingly. I am asking that you hear us tonight and make a decision to stand up for us and to speak out for us. We have no other alternative. And I'm going to be hopeful and optimistic because when I look at the table, I don't see representation of myself. I don't see anyone that looks like me. I don't see anyone who's disabled. I don't see anyone who's living in rent stabilized homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Avis Einsley. Is Avis Einsley here? Okay. The next three speakers will be Maria Garcia, Juana Navar, and Letizia Ventura.
Hola, buenas noches. Mi nombre es Maria Garcia. Vivo en el 1043 East de la 1049. Bloque de aquí. Yo voy a hablar un poco de mi situación que pasé hace cuatro días.
Good evening. My name is Maria Garcia. I live at 143 East 149th Street, a block away from here. And I'm here to talk about a situation that occurred just four days ago.
Hace cuatro días, mi nevera explotó. Hace cinco años que no tenemos super. Nadie limpia el building. Desde que usted entra por la entrada es una peste apodrido, perdón que lo diga así. Mi nevera explotó. Llamé al manager. Se lo notifiqué. Me mandó un test diciéndome que en esos momentos no tenía a nadie disponible para semegencia, que tenía que esperar al otro día.
Just a moment. If you pause for a moment, we need to get the interpretation, please.
So, my refrigerator exploded. For five years, we've had no super in the building. Nobody cleans. There's... As soon as you walk into the lobby, there's a stench, it smells rotten in there. And when my fridge exploded a few days ago, I called the manager to notify him. I got a text message back saying that he currently had nobody he could send to deal with the problem and he would have someone contact me the next day.
Me dijo también en el test que si yo no quería perder la comida, que la llevara a la bodega de abajo. Llamé al 311 el mismo día. Tengo dos niñas con asma diabético. La medicina tiene que estar en la nevera. Actualmente trabajo sola en mi casa. Mi niña mayor va a colegio. Con el salario que tengo para la ciudad, gano dinero.
Just a moment, let's get the interpretation, please. Thank you.
So, in the same text, the manager also said that if I didn't want my food to spoil, I should take it to the bodega downstairs and have them refrigerate it. I... I called 311 right that moment. I have two girls with asthma and diabetic. The insulin needs to be refrigerated or it spoils. I'm the only working person, the only breadwinner in the household, and my older daughter's going to college currently. According to the city, by the city's standards, I'm making money.
Tengo que darle dinero a mi niña para que vaya a colegio. No cualifico para cupones. Tengo que hacer todo en mi casa. Cuando viene la luz, me viene todos los meses de $235 dólares porque los... ¿Miro? ¿Los miro? El miro de la luz está en el basement y él no lo abre a los Con Edison. Pago $19.23 al mes. $1,923 de renta.
So, I have to give my daughter money for tuition and for college. I don't qualify for coupons, for SNAP, for food stamps, for anything. Every month, I have to pay $235 to Con Edison for electricity. The meter is in the basement and the landlord does not... That's an estimated cost. The meter's in the basement, the landlord does not provide access to the meters, to the Con Edison employee. And I have to pay $1,923 a month on rent.
El building fue creado en 1920. Uno de los cuartos de la niña. La ventana es de ese año. Nunca la ha podido cambiar, ni la quiere cambiar. ¿Cómo ustedes creen? En mi situación, single mother, dos niños enfermos, voy a pagar más renta. Oh, y cada vez que arregla, MCI. $43.57 in rent. Explíqueme. Deben de ponerse en las situaciones de muchas personas que estamos aquí. No peleamos por el dinero.
Excuse me. Thank you for your testimony. Let's get the interpretation.
The building was constructed in 1920. The windows in my daughter's room are from 1920. They're the original windows. Do you think that the landlord's going to change them? He refuses to change it. He refuses to replace them. Do you think I can pay more rent? I'm a single mother with two children with medical conditions. Every time, and the only time the landlord fixes everything, he slaps us with MCIs. $43.57 in MCI charges. Please think of our situation. We're not fighting here because we want money.
Thank you very much.
Esperense que todavía tenga tiempo. La nevera la tuve que comprar yo. Hoy tuve que comprar la nevera. Toda la comida la boté y tuve que comprar comida. Fueron $1,200 dólares que tuve que gastar, el dinero de la renta. Oh, me va a llevar para la corte el mes que viene porque me lleva a la corte por un mes.
I'm sorry, your time is up. Let's get the interpretation. Thank you for your testimony.
So, the landlord didn't replace my fridge. I bought a new fridge today. I had to buy a new fridge. I had to replace all the food in it. I spent $1,200, the rent money, on a fridge and on food. So, he's going to take me to court again and he'll, you know, he'll bring us into court for being behind one month in rent.
Thank you. I just want to make another announcement. In five minutes, registration will close. So if you want to speak this evening, please be sure that you register in the lobby. The next speaker is Juana Navar.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay. No, voy a hablar español. Yo vivo en 1420 de Grand Concourse. Un building bien grande, bien bonito por fuera, pero bien roto y debatado por dentro. El agua cae. Cuando llueve mucho, el agua cae, que hay que poner toalla. Yo duré seis meses llamando HPD. Iban y miraban y decían, "Wow, wow, wow." Y todo se quedaba así.
Excuse me, just one moment. Just take a pause so we can get the interpretation, please.
Ah, anyway. Que lo haga.
Yo lo voy a decir en inglés lo que está acá.
Okay, apádila. Okay. Hi, I live in 1420 Grand Concourse. It's a big, beautiful building on the outside, but it's a really broken and torn up building on the inside. When it rains, the water pours inside to the point that we have to line up towels on the floor. I've called HPD multiple times and they have come to inspect the building and all they can say is, "Wow, wow, wow," but no repairs have been done.
Uh, when I had to call... Vine para la corte para poner la queja. Tuve que pagar $45 dólares por la queja. Cuando llegaron los papeles en la luz, entonces vinieron a arreglar. Arreglaron una parte, había que luchar por la otra.
When I went to court to file a complaint, I had to pay $45 to file a complaint. When the papers came through, the landlord came and fixed part of the problem. But we still had to fight to get the other part, which wasn't fixed.
En el 2014, nos quedamos el building completo sin el gas. Un año. Después la Con Edison quiso que le pagaran ese año y no. Nadie nos respaldó y ahí estamos con aumento y aumento y aumento y los ratones se meten por la ventana.
Last... In 2014, the whole building was left without gas for a whole year. One year, and Con Edison still wanted to get paid for that year as if we had gas. So, we're still fighting. The increases keep happening and the mice keep climbing through the windows.
That's why. Yo vivo allá por 35 años. Vivo en ese apartamento y si ven aumento, estaban aumentando $36 dólares por cuarto. Cuando vinimos el miembro de casa, bajaron los 30 y dejaron los 6. Pero yo pago casi $1,200 con 35 años ahí. Y no arreglan.
I have been living in this building for 35 years in this same apartment. This year, they wanted to increase the rent for $36 per room. When I became a member of CASA, they... When I became a member of Casa, they, they forgot about those 36 dollars, they dropped the 36 dollars to 6 dollars, but today I'm paying 1,200 dollars of rent after living there for 35 years, and they still, there are no fixes.
Mi nevera la tuve que comprar y la estufa, porque la nevera se llenaba de basura mala, no servía, rota, tuve que comprarla por 16 años, tengo el servicio de nevera y estufa, y ella me lo cobra, y pago por el agua de la lavadora, 20 dólares.
I had to buy my own fridge and my own stove, because the stove that I had was no good, it would get dirty and it would, it was, it was broken, it was not, it was not work, didn't work well. I've had this fridge and stove that I bought for 16 years, and they still wanna, wanna charge me more. I paid 20 dollars extra every month for the water that I use with my washing machine.
Okay, that's my complaint, thank you.
Thank you. Letitia Ventura.
Buenas noches.
Good evening.
Mi nombre es Letitia, estoy aquí uniéndome al grupo también para poner mi queja.
Can you speak closer to the microphone, please?
Sí, estoy aquí también para unirme al grupo que están poniendo su protesta en cuanto al estilo de vida que estamos llevando. Yo soy madre soltera, todavía tengo un hijo conmigo, vivo en un dormitorio, tengo que dormir en la sala y él le da del cuarto porque yo no tengo privacidad ahora, como debería de ser.
Just, just a moment, take a pause so we can get the interpretation, please.
Okay.
Good evening, my name is Letitia and I am here to join the group here, sharing my complaints about the lifestyles that we are, that we are living in. I am a single mother, I still live with one child, one of my children, in a one-bedroom apartment. I have given my child the bedroom, and now I have to sleep in the living room because we don't have enough space, and now I don't have any privacy.
Pero lo más difícil es que yo entré a ese apartamento pagando 1,100, y ahora mismo estoy pagando 1,300 y fracción. No vivo en el mejor building, porque tengo que, o sea, el servicio es pésimo, yo tengo que salir como cinco bloques de donde yo vivo a lavar mi ropa, porque si yo tengo lavadora en mi casa, tengo que pagar 20 dólares extra, aparte que pago luz, pago luz, no tengo cable porque no me ajusta el dinero.
Just, just a moment, let's get the interpretation, please.
The hardest part for me is that I came into the building paying 1,100 dollars. I'm currently paying 1,300 dollars and more, and I live in not the best building, we have horrible service in the building, on top of that, I have to walk five blocks to do my laundry, because if I have, I use the washing machine in my apartment, I have to cha, they charge me 20 dollars per month to use it. I also pay electricity, and I don't have cable because I don't have, I don't have enough for that.
Para mí no es lo más favorable, para mí vivir como un ser humano en esta condición, porque los landlords solamente dicen pedir, pedir dinero, pero la condición de, por ejemplo, el mi landlord no, no tiene una calidad de un building accesible como el se debe de vivir aquí en Nueva York, porque hay muchos apartamentos que tienen lavadoras, pero cuando uno aplica por estos apartamentos, lo ponen en lista de espera, y la esperanza nosotros es que vamos a pagar un, renta baja, pero no, no las ponen difícil. Entonces, cuando uno, yo en mi caso, he ha querido aguantar un, un trabajo para tener un, un income para esos apartamentos, pero entonces se me hace difícil porque luego tengo que estar viendo a la corte porque el landlord me lleva.
Just a moment, we need to get the interpretation.
So for me, it's not the best conditions to live in as a human being in this city. Landlords are only used to asking and asking and asking for more from us, they don't have accessible living, they don't, they don't provide accessible living like the way that we should have in New York City. Some apartments have washers, and when you apply to those apartment buildings or to those apartments, you get waitlisted, and you apply with the hope for lower rent. On my part, I have, I have myself found jobs that would allow me to apply to apartments where I could pay lower rent, but it's hard to keep up with the work because then my landlord, my current landlord wants to take me to court.
Espero que tomen en consideración todo lo que hemos dicho aquí, porque en algunas veces ustedes también, me imagino, que han pasado por las circunstancias en que, en que uno está pasando, que a veces que uno no puede ni pensar, no se puede ni enfocar en lo que uno va a hacer, pensando en que hay que pagar esa renta y qué es lo que va a ser, qué es lo que va a pasar mañana. Yo, yo he tratado de entrar a buscar trabajo, para que, poder no, ni siquiera buscar la ayuda, pero es muy difícil.
Excuse me, we need to take a pause, get the interpretation, and we're going to have to move on to the next speaker, thank you.
So I hope that you consider everything that has been said, because I'm sure that in some, in some situations, you may have found yourselves in the same situation as us, when you're not even able to think or focus on what you're doing because you're thinking about what you're gonna do to pay rent and what's gonna happen tomorrow. I have done, I have worked hard and I have looked for work, but it's really difficult for me in these situations.
Thank you for your testimony. The next speakers are Carla Skinner.
Thank you.
Roberta Corbetta and Sharona Ponder. Carla Skinner. Roberta Corbetta and Sharona Ponder. All right, I'll hold her aside for the moment, what about Carla Skinner, is she here? No, all right.
Hi.
Good evening.
I graduated from Fordham University in 2012, and after that, I got my dream job working as a digital editor for a nonprofit. I now live in the Norwood section of the Bronx, and with rent at 1,500 dollars and 800 dollars of student loans every month, I can't afford a rent increase. So I'm here to tell you that this is not an issue for people of one color, or one demographic, or one age group, or one language, your college graduates in this city also can't afford increases. And I'm very lucky that I have parents that I can move back in with in Connecticut, but I don't want to move in with my parents at 28 years old with a full-time job and a part-time job on the side.
Thank you. Sharona Ponder, is she here, she may need to have the microphone brought to her. I'm sorry? All right, I'll hold these aside. The next speakers are Nelson Lozado, Corinne Ombogo Golden, and Guadalupe Hernandez. Nelson Lozado. Excuse me, your name is?
My name is Corinne Ombogo Golden.
All right, go ahead.
I just said my name, so I will not repeat it. I'm a proud descendant of the whole shit country, Congo and Ethiopia, if you have a cell phone, you know the Congo. Now, I don't have a landlord, I have a Dracula, 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 Dracula. I live in America, the first country of the world. I live in New York City, the first megaphone of the world, first megaphone of the world. Now I live in the Bronx, the poorer neighbor, neighborhood of the city of the world, the first city of the world, okay? Now, in that first city of the world, that's the country of the world, God bless America, Bronx, God bless the New Yorker. I live with rats, rodent, mouse, mold, no electricity, no heat. Dracula, Dracula, Dracula has the nerve to give me racist rhetoric every time I ask for repair. I can't ask for repair, he sent me to court for any reason. He has a legislation about my immigration statute. I feel like the Congolese Korea of the zoo have more rights than me as a human being. So I don't know that word landlord you're calling, I know Dracula, because he's a master of strategic harassment, he has no, 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 I mean, no blood whatsoever, and I wonder if I live in New York or from back in the Congo, because actually, in the Congo, I was abused and harassed for free. Here, in America, New York City, I am paying a high rent to be harassed. So harassment and abuse should be free. I live in the country where you have the United Nations quarter, bullying is against the law, but Dracula Lord is harassing everybody, doing whatever he feel like doing, and I said no to the rent increase, I say roll back, he doesn't deserve to be rewarding for his bad behavior. This is America, I am not a monkey from the Congo, I'm a human being, and housing is a human right. Je dis non, je dis non, et je dis redit non. You see, this is diversity, the boss is diversity. And I said no, and no, and no to any augmentation, increase, whatever it is that you're gonna say for that Dracula Lord there. I refuse to continue to be abused, bullied, harassed, without any consequence for that Dracula. And if you want his name, David, David, David Green, David Klein, Alex Rodman, and so forth.
Thank you.
And I'm in solidarity with every tenant of New York City that live and does a vampirism, draculism, impose by Dracula.
Excuse me, we need to move on to the next speaker.
Against the draculism, you see, I'm prepared.
Thank you. Guadalupe Hernandez. Is Guadalupe Hernandez here? No? All right, let me just say, is?
Really, just, I'm sorry, Juan Atene went to the restroom and she missed her call, so she wants to testify, Sharonda.
That's fine.
All right, can I take the mic to her?
You can, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Sharona Ponder, and I live in the South Bronx, between Longwood and Innerville. And I was, I wanted y'all to dig deep down inside yourselves and listen to that word, stabilize, and what does that word stabilize mean to you? It's a state of stable, of stability, and that's what we all are asking for here, and if our rent is increased, our stability will be taken away from us, and that would defeat the purpose of saying that we live in rent stabilized, or some place that is based on our income. There's a lot of people that, we have a lot of elders, we have people who are disabled, we have people who just don't make enough money to cover the rent, and we just want you to dig down into your souls and just think about that word stabilize and what it would mean to you if you were in the same predicament as we are here, asking for our stability. So please, we're asking, freeze the rent, please, don't let it keep on going up, because we have nowhere else to go, but where we live at now. And we can't afford, when we can't afford where we live at now, because the landlords are asking, asking for something that we can't afford. So just please, please, just think about that word stabilize, and what it means to the people that you're saying that you want to give stability to. All right? So please, zero percent, no rent, no rent increases.
Thank you. Did Roberta Corbetta come back? Is Roberta Corbetta here? The next three speakers are Mercy Aniaco, Gina Siliberto, and Jose Ponce. Is Mercy Aniaco here? Okay. Gina Siliberto? All right. Jose Ponce?
Yes.
Okay, fine, go ahead, thank you.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
I currently live in the Bronx now for eight years.
Can you just speak a little closer to the microphone, please?
Of course.
Thank you.
I've currently lived in the Bronx now for eight years. I've been taking my landlord to housing court, contacting the DHCR, to get simple repairs done in my apartment, and throughout the building. My landlord has neglected every single court order, and everything is fallen on deaf's ears. The only thing I've been told is that, oh, things will be ordered, things will be ordered. My building has gone six months without gas, I currently do not have a working stove or working refrigerator, I am chronically disabled, I'm diabetic, and I do not have a refrigerator to even put my insulin in. And your board is trying to say that it's okay for my landlord to get a rent increase for allowing people such as myself and everyone else here to pay more. I think it's disgusting. We are New York, we deserve more than this, our landlords have money, our landlords are allowing us to live in substandard, subhuman conditions. I've been working to get new housing, I've been getting discriminated against countlessly, from everything, from source of income discrimination, to everything else under the sun, and these are landlords and brokers all doing this to me, and these are people that you are protecting countlessly. I'm asking you, we are asking you, a zero percent increase. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speakers are Myrelita, Genie Dubnow, and Negozzi Ibinum. Myrelita, L-E-T-A? No? Genie Dubnow? Okay.
Hi, my name is Genie Dubnow, I'm from Rena, Riverside Edgecombe Neighborhood Association. We're not in the Bronx, we're in Washington Heights, and the reason we're here tonight is because Thursday night, we have our housing clinic, and that's more important than coming here. Why? Why is it more important? You people know everything that you were told today, you've heard it a million times, and you're gonna hear it a million times more, but what are you gonna do? How are you gonna vote? I'm talking to public members, you're the ones who have the responsibility, if you raise the rents, you have the responsibility on your conscience of more. If you raise the rents, you have the responsibility on your conscience of more homelessness. So we can do more good Thursday night than we can do here tonight. But we're still here. We're still here. Why? We came across 145th Street to come here, because we feel the responsibility that we must speak. Now, you know damn well that the poverty in this city is so great, and the people's income is so low that they cannot afford to pay anymore. Now, you're gonna get... I'll just give you some facts that you already know, because you've read about it. 60,000 New Yorkers are living in the city shelter system. You know that. About 22,000 of these people are children. You know that. One-third of the families in shelters are working, but they can't afford to pay rent. You know that. Now, in our neighborhood, a family of four, the average, medium income is like 43,000. That means 50% earn less. Now, you know what affordable is supposed to be, one-third of your income. So for a family like that, it should be $1,194 a month. You find me an apartment in Washington Heights, even a one-bedroom, even a studio, that you can get for $1,194. You find it. Can you? That's what you should be doing, instead of sitting there and just being polite. You should be going out there and looking for yourselves. I'm tired of coming here. We're all tired of coming here, but we still do it. Why? Because it's our responsibility. But you are not fulfilling your responsibility, which is to vote for a zero percent, if not a rollback.
Thank you. Nogozzi Ibino? Is Nogozzi Ibino here? The next three speakers are Antoinette Rose, Patricia Charles, and Anna Reyes. Antoinette Rose?
Yes, I am Antoinette Rose.
Good evening.
Good evening. Okay, my, okay, my name is Antoinette Rose, and I live at 241 East Mashula Parkway North, Apartment 4G, Bronx, New York, 10467. I currently work at Montefiore Medical Center, and I'm in the Union 1199 SCIU. Now, we're in league contract negotiation, and the league is telling us that they do not have any money to give us an increase in our pay. Now, if I do not get an increase in my pay, where am I gonna find the money to make, the landlord is raising the rent, where am I gonna find the extra money to pay the increase in the landlord raising the rent? So everywhere around, we're getting fight, and we are always stretched and thin to find money to pay the rent. I'm already paying around 40% of my income in rent. Now, if the rent increase, I'm gonna have to struggle even more to pay more rent. So this is why I want a zero percent increase in the rent increase.
Thank you. Patricia Charles?
Greetings. My name is Patricia Charles.
Good evening.
And I am a proud member of the North Bronx Community and Clergy Coalition. I'm also a part of CASA. I'm part of Community Voices Heard, but I'm an educator. I work with special needs children, and I've lived in my community, 1260 Burke, East Chester Gardens, Apartment 2C. I work hard. Just because I work hard, I'm still paying, I'm working just to pay my bills. The rent is so high, it's, I mean, even though outside of the private sector, it's much higher because you have to pay gas and electric and water and all that. But I work hard for the same common goal, to keep a roof over my head. I work hard for the children that I serve, my colleagues, but I also know about people who are in the private sector. And the landlords aren't worth a D-A-M-E, damn. They are not repairing the repairs in the homes properly. Those apartments, they are, how can I say? You have soot, you have mold and mildew. All they're doing is painting over those, those different type of toxic issues. And HPD is, they're coming in, they're doing inspections, but they're not actually writing everything down to make sure that those repairs are done properly. So this is a catch-22. So HPD ain't worth a damn either. But in the same token, we're here, and we're on your mercy. We're asking you to think about what we're going through. If you're not going through it, hopefully, you don't have to go through the things that we're going through. We need your help to please zero, rollback, rent freeze, all of the above, because this is the things that we're asking you to do. Rollback, rent free, please stop making it look like we don't matter, because we do. I thank you.
Thank you. Anna Reyes?
Yes, good evening.
Good evening.
Rent freeze and zero percent increase. I'm here, because I want to be united, but I usually get very nervous. And I was just sitting there in the back, and I recall 50 years living in Washington Heights, and the last 20 at West Harlem. And I remember my mother retired, and two years and a half she passed, and I, like, six months before, I was feeling, she never got sick. She knew she wasn't sick. All this had happened, the stories is just a repeat, the same over there, no, he, she had to come to the Bronx as a home attendant. And I'm also talking on behalf of four generations. It's really sad, and I was feeling it out there, where my mother had filled out a piece of paper from her landlord, and she does, she didn't, she said, "No, just put me..." She didn't even want to put her spouse, she's married to, or her son, disabled in the house. And I was, I was in shock. And I said, "Mom, what happened? Why are you doing this?" And she said, "Oh, because they'll rise my rent. They'll raise it." And I said, "Mom, who told you that lie?" And a year ago, I've been in the same apartment for 20 years now, and the same thing, nasty, no repair, and repair are like garbage, like, like, inhuman. It's inhumane. And then you have to take them to court, and then a week later, they charging me, they billing me for legal fees. And you get all paranoid. I work in an emergency room. I work for the city in an emergency room. And, you know, I want to come home, and there's mold, there's humidity, and I had to call Probono. They took my case just recently. I have a year without gas. And they have to babysit for the three first days, and they show up, the second day, they call around 1:45 and said, "What is there to be done? Did they put the gas?" And the lawyers were there, three lawyers I have from Probono, and they really gonna be looking for that. And then Nisha goes two days, two, two a day, two inspector, and I don't know what's going on. I don't know whose side are they on. And then I'm like, "What's going on?" And then if there's no justice, there's no peace. And, you know, everybody say it, you know, like, into your heart, and look in that, and awaken conscious. You know, we are human too.
Thank you. The next three speakers are Maria Peña, Josephine Ventura, and Evelyn Rivera. Maria Peña?
Buenas noches.
Good evening.
Mi nombre es María Peña. He trabajado en la ciudad de Nueva York 37 años dejó matendan. Ahora soy una persona retirada y tengo un low income. Pago la renta mes a mes. Tuve que cancelar el cable porque el dinero no me alcanza para pagar solamente poca comida. Y tengo que buscar la manera de como engañarme.
Excuse me, just pause for a moment so we can get the interpretation, please.
Good evening. My name is María Peña. I worked in New York City for 37 years as a home attendant. I'm now retired on a low income, and my money doesn't stretch far enough. I had to cut the cable service so I could make rent. I live on little food.
Pero el manier que tenemos ahora en mi edificio, yo vivo en Washington Heights, se llama ABJ Management. Ahora él se ha dedicado a coger todos los moni orden y los cheques que nosotros mandamos. Lo mandamos el día tres y el día cuatro. Yo personalmente lo echo directamente en el correo para que nunca llegue mi renta tarde. Ahora él hace una tracadería depositando nuestros cheques y nuestros moni orden en la gaveta de su oficina y la deposita en el banco que él tiene para la cuenta de nosotros.
So my landlord, my management company, which is ABJ Management, in Washington Heights, has been playing with our rents. We make sure that we put the checks in the mail at the beginning of the month, and instead of depositing them, he just puts them in the drawer and waits until mid-month or later to deposit it into the bank and claim that we're late.
Él lo deposita el 18 y los 19 de cada mes y a nosotros nos manda tres días antes de que se denza el mes diciendo que tenemos que cada uno que pagar 25 dólares late fee todos los meses desde este marzo de este año, día 28 que cogió la posición.
Excuse me, we need to get the interpretation, please.
So the checks are deposited on the 18th and the 19th of the month after receiving them at the beginning of the month. And then, three days before the month is over, he sends us notices telling us that we all owe a $25 late fee on our rent.
Pero no solamente a mí, a todos los tenas. Y hay muchos que están bien asustados y están pagándolo. Yo le he dicho que no lo paguen porque nosotros no debemos esa renta.
And that doesn't just happen to me, that happens to all my neighbors, to all the tenants. Some are paying them out of fear or paying that $25 fee. I have told my neighbors to not pay that fee, because we're not supposed to, we don't own that money, but people are afraid.
Pero él se ha dedicado a visitar todos los días y hospigar a todo lo que él ve que son muy débiles. A mi apartamento él no ha ido porque él sabe cómo yo me sé defender.
So the landlord's been coming around daily to visit, to harass the tenants that he knows are afraid. He doesn't come by my apartment, though, because he knows that I'll stand up for myself.
Ahora se dedicó a cambiar llavines de las puertas de entrada de cada uno de los edificios. Somos tres edificios en uno. Y está sacándole fotografía a los tenas, sacando fotocopia de los ID, porque según él, él es un policía y nosotros somos los delincuentes, que él tiene que saber hasta el social security de cada uno de nosotros. Yo le dije que yo no lo iba a hacer y no se lo di. Y me dijo, "¿Cuál es la llave que lo necesita?"
We need to get the interpretation, and then we need to move on to the next speaker.
So there are three buildings under the same management. They've started, they just started changing all the keys to all the locks, and they've been photographing the tenants, they've been asking and trying to get photocopies of IDs, and the landlord claims that he's a cop and that we're delinquents or that we're criminals. They're asking for social security numbers. I've refused to give them any of this, because I know that within my rights, I don't have to.
Muchas gracias por su atención y espero que ustedes tengan conciencia y pongan cero, cero, cero renta alta. Gracias.
Thank you for your attention, and I hope that you will decide, that you'll listen to your conscience, and you'll decide to give us a zero, zero, zero rent increase.
Thank you.
Thank you.